Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Borough of Englewood Cliffs Mayor and Council Special Meeting on December 29th, 2016. It's 10:34 in the morning. Madam Clerk, may I have a roll call?
Mayor Kranjak?
Here.
Councilperson Deversa?
Here.
Liang?
Here.
Oh?
Here.
McMorro?
Here.
Park?
Here.
Consavo?
Here.
Borough Attorney?
Here.
Superintendent D.P.W.?
Here.
And Municipal Clerk. Everyone's present, ma'am.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, actually, let's have a flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, would you please read the Open Public Meetings Act statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting was given to the press and posted as required. Date and time of this meeting was legally given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act. This notice is on file with the municipal clerk and posted on the bulletin board. Minutes of this meeting will be made available to the public upon the petition of typing and proofreading filed by municipal clerk.
Thank you. May I have a motion to go into closed session, please?
Close.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, excuse them to come out of closed session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to open up to the public?
So moved.
If there's anyone from the public who wishes to be heard, please come to the microphone, state your name and address, and try to keep it to about three minutes if you can.
We cannot talk about the ordinances right now.
Yes. Yes. Who just started? I heard you coming.
Nice Willow Drive. As we sit here, it's December 29th, I guess, somewhere around there, 2016, and we start to think about the year in review. The year opened with so much promise. You know, I'll admit freely, I was supporting Mr. Pavaro. I've known him since high school. He's at my wedding. He's been at all my children's life events. You know, a great guy, but I said, "Okay, we have a new mayor, and let's see. There's going to be all sorts of promise for the town of Englewood Cliffs." Boy, was I disappointed. Started with the, with day one, actually, with the opening speech. Already, I felt the attack. "We're going after, we are making changes. We're not going to sit and see what all the good things are about Englewood Cliffs." Englewood Cliffs was a really good town. You all moved here because Englewood Cliffs was a, was a really good town. I mean, some of us had, we were born here, and we chose to come back. We chose to raise our kids, so we knew what Englewood Cliffs was. You guys came because the taxes were low, because the schools were good, whether you chose to use them or not. You came because it was great. Spent the money, bought your houses, and it was really a great town. So we start with the first, we're on the attack. Who knows anything about running a town? Usually, when you start an event like that, you learn. You take the time. You talk to those people who know. I mean, we know about how it was done some other times where you don't include the other side, you don't even give the resumes of who you're hiring. That was, that was done for maybe a year or two. That was not a regular routine, and certainly not in the council or in the town that I know or knew. So we get to that. Next thing we know, we were suspending the police chief. On what? On charges that were created? It was just a very convenient thing that you had certain lawsuits coming up. Perhaps it was Officer Tracy's lawsuit, perhaps it was something else, and you felt the need to remove the chief, so you made the charges unilaterally. It must have been one side. I don't know when you discussed it, because certainly Gloria and Ed didn't know anything about it before it was done. You had a prepared speech. "Okay, all right, let's move on." Maybe it was just a mistake. You know, I'm kind of an eternal optimist, and I thought to myself, "Okay, made a mistake, close the door on that mistake, go on." And then we got to get to the budget. We're reducing the budget $25 a household. Bye. We're taking 200,000, we're cutting overtime to 200,000. But who knew enough to cut overtime to 200,000? Did anybody know what it took to run a police department? Did anyone know what it said in the contract? Did anyone read the procedure manual to find out what it takes? Anyone want to yield their turn? I don't think so. And then we know we have 300 and some odd thousand dollars of tax appeals. We know this before the budget's done, and they're not in the budget. Suddenly, after elections, we do a special, you know, special funding for this. This isn't right. This is just playing with the people of town. I mean, you want to get elected. Everybody wants to get elected. That's fine, but let the people know where the town stands. Let the people know what they need. And then we know that Gloria and Ed are continued to be excluded. You can't do that. That's not how a council is run. Everybody should be included in on the discussions. It doesn't matter what it is. There's no reason they shouldn't know this. And I got to tell you, the clincher was this morning when I read the paper. This is disgusting. It's embarrassing. I mean, for the first time in my life, I am embarrassed to say that I come from the town of Englewood Cliffs. How you put charges, again, trumped up charges. You had a case, you had a judge, you had a police officer, you had the whole PVA saying that they were concerned for their safety regarding a particular police officer, and you dismiss those charges, and you keep trumping up charges. Can I go forward?
No.
And you keep trumping up charges on somebody who has served us dramatically. I mean, I remember Chief Chaffey, before he was chief, under my deck with the Canines, with the county, looking for the guy who lived two blocks away who murdered his mother parents with a machete. I, my husband was traveling, I had two young kids, and he was, they were there under the deck. He went and he caught him out in the woods by Sage Road. This is a guy who serves the town. He works all day. This is a particular event, and he's out with the 9W, a couple corporations had break-ins. He was there. He worked the whole next day. He should have taken time off, but he didn't. He hears a call come through, I'm sitting in Cafe Italiano. The ambulance comes up, the, and Chief Chaffey follows. I know he's been working for 36 hours, and he came up because he wanted to drive the ambulance so the two EMTs could work in the back. This is the guy you're torturing. You're torturing him, you're torturing his family, and I have to say, high expectations. 2017 will start at the bottom. Hopefully, it can work your way out. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to be heard? Yes.
I would like to say that I haven't been disappointed. I'm very happy that everyone's rights are finally being respected in this community and that resident complaints are finally being addressed. Under the previous administration, I repeatedly sent letters. They never made it to the correspondence of the borough, and nothing was ever done. So thank you for responding and respecting everyone and treating everyone fairly.
Is there anyone else that wishes to be heard?
Ellen Park, 116 Pershing Road. I just, I think I heard that ordinance that we're not going to be discussed. Is that what I, oh, later. Okay, I just had a question.
All right, fine.
Anyone else? Have a motion to close the public portion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Madam Clerk, would you read into the record of public hearing ordinance 2016-11?
An ordinance amending the code of the Borough of Englewood Cliffs, Sections 2-13, entitled "Police Department to Add Section 2-13.8 Entitled Hiring Police Policies," I'm sorry, Hiring Policies and Procedures. We need a motion to open?
So moved.
Who is the second?
Count.
Councilperson Deversa?
To vote, yeah.
No, to vote, to open.
Open to the public. That's why I said.
Councilperson Deversa? Yes?
Yes.
Liang?
Yes.
Oh?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Consavo?
Yes.
It's open, ma'am.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to be heard on the ordinance that we're discussing? Please come to the microphone, state your name and address, please.
Chief Michael Chaffey with the Police Department. I think the council, if someone could give it to the council people, I'd appreciate it. Going back to October 3rd, I sent an email to the mayor and council in reference to the hiring of an officer with all of the credentials and proper procedure that we have, and I also had contacted the state chiefs in reference to that, and I had, the entire process was set up for us to give a test and to go through the procedure in accordance with our accreditation standards. And since that time, I didn't get any response from the mayor, but at the November 10th council meeting, the borough attorney asked at the end of the meeting for authorization to contact the chiefs of police to get figures and applicant testing information. Now, Councilman Deversa stated, "Just to gather information," and he was told, "Yes, just to gather information." The next thing we have is a nine-page ordinance in reference to the hiring process, and it basically, what it does is just, you know, it takes it out of my hands as the police chief, you know. I'm not going to ever be the only police chief here. There's going to be other police chiefs that come and go, and to take that out of the police chief's hands is, to me, is ludicrous, because he's the one that knows the most about the town, about the officers, about their capabilities, and what job needs to be done. But aside from that, okay, there are issues with this ordinance that was written up. I'm not saying that it's a bad ordinance, and I'm not saying that I'm totally against it, because I'm not, but there's a lot of issues in this ordinance, some of them borderline on infringing on people's rights. And I am asking the mayor and council to please not vote on this until there's a proper time for them to meet with the police department and maybe Frank Rogers. I have a letter from Frank Rogers, who is our accreditation, he does all of our accreditation standard, some of us, Fort Lee, all the towns. He's a major figure in the police field. He's a retired colonel from the New Jersey State Police. He works with prosecutor Greewall, and he's highly respected in our field, and he's a very educated man. Aside from that, the point that I'm trying to make here is that there are a lot of issues that are written in this ordinance. There are some, just to give you an example, that the Police Committee will review certain records of candidates and stuff. And I don't believe that that should be proper. The Police Committee wants to know who's going to be doing the investigation. That's not proper. They shouldn't know who's investigating or doing the investigation. There's a lot of other things on this that I could go over and over and on and on about. I'm just asking you to think about this. This is very important. It's a major step in Englewood Cliffs, okay, and not vote on this issue tonight or today to make, have a time that we can have a meeting with myself, Frank Rogers, and the Police Committee. Because Mr. Consavo, as you're aware, since January, I think we've only met maybe once. You haven't answered any of the emails that were sent, and I have not met with the Police Committee here, not even once. So there's no communication, and it shouldn't be. We need communication. We need to talk. We need to put this on the agenda and make sure that we talk about it and solve this problem, okay? There are issues here in Englewood Cliffs that need to be addressed, and the Police Committee is a very important part. The Police Department is a very important part, okay? I don't want to start the new year off with everybody polarized against one another. We should not be that way, okay? I want, I want my door open. I want the guys to come in. I want to sit down and talk and iron the situation out and the problems out, but there has to be communication. There has to be transparency, and there hasn't been for the whole year. So, thank you.
Chief, may I respond for a moment? Thank you for your comments. I just want to make sure you did receive the email that asked for your comments on this. It was an email that was sent, I believe, the borough attorney sent it to all of us, asking for everyone's comments. We had, we all had the opportunity. Every member of this council had an opportunity to respond to it. Did you receive that?
I received the email, and I did, I did speak to the borough attorney, I mean, the borough administrator, but it went nowhere.
But that's not, no.
And the second issue, you're asking for mental evaluations of our crossing guards and things. Those were things that we were, you know, which, who's going to pay for that? You know, it's ridiculous.
So that I can understand the facts, the purpose of my question. I was under the impression that you got that email, and in fact, I repeatedly did ask to the borough attorney, because that's the only person I would ask to, if you received comments back. Did you hear anything from the chief of police? Did he have any comments? Did he have any comments to you?
When I received this, it was a completed document, nine-page ordinance. It was already, already being presented.
The document has to start somewhere.
It was already presented. Then it starts with the Police Committee, to be honest with you. Starts with the Police Committee.
But that's your opinion.
Not with, that's not my opinion. That says the bylaws of Englewood Cliffs.
Okay.
The bylaws of Englewood Cliffs. I have them here if you want to see a copy of them.
I have.
And they do say, they do say that the Police Committee is the point that I am supposed to relate to and talk to. They never even talked to me. Okay, there's no communication here. Let's be honest. I'm telling them what the truth is, and we're skirting around the issue. The issue here is you're going to make, you're going to pass an ordinance now that is very, very important on the Police Department, and whatever I say here, maybe it'll change your mind, maybe not. I'm telling you that it's a very important decision, and that you should think about it, and think about what's in the best interest of this town before you vote on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am, I don't think, I don't think this takes the decision-making away from the chief. I just. What it does is it includes everybody, right? Mayor, council, and chief. It's collaborative. And there were some things I asked not to be in there, but they're in there. Can we discuss that? It's minor things. Can we do that after we close the public portion? Okay. Is there anyone else from the public that wishes to be heard? Yes. That's all right, go ahead.
We're getting next?
Yeah, one of you.
Good afternoon. Sergeant Walt, Englewood Cliffs Police Department, on behalf of the Englewood Cliffs Police Department Bargaining Unit. I just want to add, we've reviewed the ordinance, and it seems that it's very fairly written, and we recognize the importance of properly vetting a candidate for police officer. One point I just would like to make out, again, on behalf of the bargaining unit, under eligibility, Section 1, you have, it's, let's see here, number three, must have successfully completed the basic police officer's training and have PTC number. All well and good, I understand that other municipalities and boroughs do have that as a requirement. Just a suggestion, you may want to consider having that as a preferred requisite as opposed to a absolutely required requisite, and the reason being that you do limit some of your candidates, and sometimes what happens is you have candidates that have a PTC number that are not getting hired by the boroughs for whatever reason, and maybe they aren't, you know, the best candidates, and you kind of get with, for lack of a better word, you get like the leftovers, if you will. You would, again, be limited in your pool of candidates. However, if you had candidates that were very good applicants, submitted to the final stages of their interview, and they happen to have a PTC number, well, that's your prerogative if you'd like to hire them. Just a consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Mrs. Norton?
Yeah, I just have just a couple of questions in reading through this. I am certainly not an expert in the area. However, some of these points have come up before, and just want to bring them up again. I know that Ms. O'Shea was a very strong proponent of having a nepotism clause in a hiring contract. I don't see it here. I know that she was very vocal at one time. Nepotism, nepotism, as was Ms. Eastwood. I think that it's certainly something that should be considered in here. I had also noted on the college, but I had a concern about people's rights. Of course, these guys know far more about it than I do, but to have the Police Committee reviewing health records of people and their psychological evaluations, I think that's really risky business, okay? Just with all the HIPAA requirements and all. If you don't want it to be the chief, if you want it to be somebody, get an independent physician. Get somebody else or a group of people who can do it. But to have townspeople reviewing the medical records and psychologics of other people, that's a really scary thing. That's really not appropriate, and I would think that medical professionals would agree with me strongly there. The other thing I was concerned with was, does the Police Committee, the chief of police and the other council members, as designated by the Police Committee, shall administer the oral interview phase? I think it makes a lot of sense for the whole council to do that, because you have a lot of people with a lot of experience and a lot of knowledge base, and everybody has it, not just those designated by the, by the party in power at the time. I think that there are definite advantages. I think this is exclusionary. I think it, and I'm sure the intent wasn't to make it political, however, looking at it on the surface, it's very political. So I think it makes sense to have the entire council involved in the, in the process. I think it worked. I think it works well. I've sat on a committee that did that. I've, you know, I've sat on the council when we have hired people, and I think those are just some important changes. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to be heard?
Mary O'Shea, 12 Irving Avenue. I remember many years ago when we did give the police test. I think that we haven't given a test for hiring officers in, as long as Chief Chaffey is the chief, and I don't even know if it was done when Bauschmidt was the chief. It was done when Captain Larry Whiting was the chief. I know that. And always in the previous years before that, and I remember my husband took the test, you know, when he was a young man, and he passed the test, but he didn't pass the interview. And you never know why you don't pass the interview. You don't know what you say wrong or what you didn't say or you should have said, but it happens. And that was the police chief's test, and I think the people that did the interviews were police chiefs from other towns. So I, I'm very glad to see that we are going to give a test again, because Englewood Cliffs is a premier town, and everybody, both sides, always say that, and I think we deserve to have the best quality police officers working for us. And many of the surrounding towns have college requirements besides for hiring, and we don't. And we don't even have a test. So, I mean, in the recent past, I don't know what the criteria was in hiring, if it was being a friend of a friend, or, you know, friend of whom, or brother-in-law, or sister-in-law, or whatever, some connection to somebody that the people got hired. But I'm very glad to see that it goes back to a testing procedure, a defined procedure, so that people can get the best quality people. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to be heard? Yes.
Ellen Park, 116 Pershing Road. I was just wondering who drafted, or I guess the police, was it the Police Committee who drafted the ordinance?
Our office did. Our attorney's office.
And so there were no council people that were involved in the drafting of this ordinance? Is that correct?
Correct.
Well, I reviewed and I created some edits as well.
It's been reviewed.
It was circulated to everyone, including the police chief, and we took all the comments and gave them to borough council.
And portions of this are directly from the current policy that is in effect with the Police Department. So we, you know, we did try to make it as all-encompassing and including the police chief in as many steps.
And is it currently, I guess, the current ordinance is that the police officer must be a United States citizen? Out of curiosity.
I don't recall what, I mean, the current ordinance doesn't have any.
It's always been.
But it is a requirement. It's a requirement as also for the state police.
To be a U.S. citizen.
To be a U.S. citizen, correct.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else? Have a motion to close the public portion? Okay, Councilman Deversa, you had a question?
My interesting comments are, you know, last time this was brought up. So my, I would like to not have, I'm okay with everything, actually. I don't think we take the power away from the chief. I think we're getting his input, and I think it's good to have everybody involved in the input. I think the police on whole are okay with the application process. My personal thing is I don't think we should require, I don't think we should limit ourselves as a borough by requiring them, candidates to have a college degree. I don't think, I listened to Officer Walt, I don't think we should require them to have completed the academy, although it would be preferential. Of course, we always think of that. And so those items were in Section H, A, 2A, and number three, I think.
So to your first point, H2A, which is in Section 1, there's an A, there's an A or a B. The A is the bachelor's degree and some other educational qualifications, and the B is or, or B, have served a minimum of two years of active duty in the armed forces and been honorably discharged. So you don't necessarily have to have a college degree.
So, but is that, so it's not a requ, but let's say somebody didn't go through the military, would they be required to have a college degree?
Yes.
Well, it's a or B, yes.
So can we make it preferential as opposed to a mandatory part? That would be my.
Why, what's your reasoning behind that?
Like I said, there, I think there are many candidates, perhaps in that field, that may not be able to afford a college education, and I don't think we should eliminate a position or a profession where, I'm not saying it's not, it's not a help perhaps to be a college graduate, but there are many excellent officers in the country that do not have a college degree, and I don't think it should be a requirement by us, but it's just, again, a personal opinion. I think we limit our field a little bit with that. That's my thought process on that. And the same thing with the academy. I think there are people who can't afford the academy that would like to have maybe a position first or potential position first and then go through the academy. Again, I would prefer that to be so the borough doesn't have to foot that bill, but we have officers here that we've hired over the years that were through, had gone through the academy and those who have not, and they're all good officers, so I don't, I just don't want to limit us by that. So if we could change to prefer it as opposed to mandatory, I always like to leave us a little flexibility. Same thing with, I guess it's Section 9, Item A, Point 1, residents of Englewood Cliffs. I'm not sure if this means the, that that would be, so somebody who is a resident of Englewood Cliffs would get the preferential selection over someone who's not a resident?
Sorry, what section are you in?
Number 9, Roman numeral 9, A, number 1. And that would be the same thing, and how does that, you know, my question is, how does that, you know, what positions that put us in? If we get a candidate who's, who's not as a good candidate, they're not as good a candidate either, but they're from Englewood Cliffs, do we all, do we have to pick them, or is that?
So, yeah, Councilman Deversa, the section that you're referring to gives a preference to Englewood Cliffs residents, but doesn't exclude others.
Okay. So it's just preferences?
Yeah.
And because it's may, you don't have to if the Police Committee has an applicant that is not from within the borough that they think is most qualified to present for higher status?
That's okay. I just want to make sure it's preference, preferential or not, you know, we want.
And to address your two earlier points, you know, obviously after the council, what they want in terms of an ordinance, but I would, I would support leaving it the way we have it here with the educational requirements and with the opt-out for armed we have it here with the educational requirements and with the opt-out for armed forces as a standard as well. And then also, I would keep the basic course of police officers having been completed to be an applicant.
So I don't know if anybody else has any comments in there?
I do.
I have a question or to the borough attorney. So I'd like to know, Councilwoman O should maybe recuse on this though, because I have the floor right now, so don't make your...
I'm gonna lay off, I'm gonna lay off.
No.
Okay, you think there's a conflict?
Yeah, because...
Councilwoman Aversa, hold on. Can you just state your reason why you think there's a conflict?
There may be a conflict because there is a pending litigation, and also there's another litigation where you're being personally named in the suit. Same thing for the mayor. So I'm just, excuse me, Councilwoman, I am addressing the question to the borough attorney and not to you, so I would appreciate it if you could just let the borough attorney speak.
I absolutely will, Councilwoman. I was just trying to recollect what you were referencing, that's all.
Thank you, Councilwoman O. Because this is a general police procedure matter, there is no need to recuse. The litigation which you reference actually names four members of this council, which would mean if all were to recuse, we wouldn't have a quorum. So that, we can't rest on that litigation, and that litigation has nothing to do with police policy and procedure and establishing an ordinance regarding hiring. But thank you for your concern.
Any other observations, concerns, issues?
May I just make a motion to eliminate, or make it, change the wording in 2A and number three to preferential as opposed to mandatory?
Okay, I think we're still in discussion.
Yeah, we're in discussion and it's proceeding.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I, Councilwoman Aversa, yeah. If you go online and look at other requirements for many other towns, you'll see that the requirements that are in here, I'm talking mostly with the college degree and the PTC certified, okay, the PTC certified, is becoming more the norm than not.
I understand.
No, no, so more and more towns are adopting this. Obviously, they're seeing the need for it and just seeing why they feel it's in their town and their residents' best interest. I personally believe that we should have the college for four years and that we should have the PTC certified. That's like, you know, what requirements you want for a doctor that you may go to or for somebody else, you may be, you have the floor, you know, so you set your goals high and then you go from there. But, I mean, there's nothing wrong with setting, setting the, your goals high and getting the best candidates out there for the residents in the town.
But that's the disagreement. See, I don't, I don't think just because they have a college degree would make them necessarily the best candidates. You could get a college degree in art, what would that have to do with...
But this is an art, this is something different, but we can have a difference of opinion, that's why we're...
Well, I'll actually interject on that. So even if you had a college degree in art, you've had other classes, correct, that don't have to do with art. That would be beneficial here, so. Is there anyone else that has anything? No, we're up, right. Okay, no further comments.
We have to vote on the motion at the moment.
No, this was, it's not moved yet. It was just moved to open to public, closed to public, and discussion.
Can I make a motion?
Well, Councilman Aversa has a motion.
You made a motion on the table. So the motion was...
The motion was just to change the wording to preferential on Items H, A, and 2A and number three. Just add, wherever you added, don't, so. And that's preferential as opposed to mandatory.
It needs a second.
Is there a second to Mr. Councilman Aversa's drafting motion?
May I make a motion to pass this ordinance?
So just to clean it up, Mr. Aversa, your motion fails.
Yeah.
Is another motion pending?
I'm making a motion, and I'm trying to make a motion, the Councilwoman O tried to make a motion.
Go ahead.
So I'd like to make a motion that we table this off, and I'd like to have the police and the PBA involved. I think Ms. Norton brought up a very valid point. There's an issue with HIPAA here. When it comes to medical records, you have to be very, you know, cautious about who's reading, you know, other people's medical information, and all these issues are very valid, and I'd make a motion to table this and get the PBA and the chief involved.
Just wanted to make a comment on the HIPAA issue. You know, if you're applying for a job, you're being asked to waive some of your rights, and that's what they would be doing here in order to get a job. So I don't think that HIPAA would be necessarily the problem here. Is there a second to Councilwoman O's motion?
I'll second it, just to table it, have a discussion.
Okay. Okay, let's, let's have a roll call.
Councilperson Aversa?
Yes.
Liang?
I'm sorry, just hold on. Let's roll call for which one, for the motion you made?
To enable it to have further discussion with the police.
Yes.
Gloria?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman O. McMorro?
No.
Park?
No.
Consavo?
No.
Is it time, Mayor?
No.
May I make a motion to pass the ordinance so that we can start the process of hiring a police officer?
Second. Was that Councilman Park?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, may I take a roll call?
Yes.
Councilperson Aversa?
So what are we voting on now?
Pass the ordinance so we can start the process.
Liang?
Let me, let me check the session mark. What are we voting on right now?
The actual ordinance that was, the way it is, that I sent to everyone last night. No changes.
No.
O?
No.
McMorro?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Consavo?
Yes.
Is it time, Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passes. I'm sorry, ordinance passes as is.
Okay, the next ordinance that's up is public hearing ordinance, 2016-12, Madam Burke, please read that into record.
Public hearing for, an ordinance amending the code of the Borough of Englewood Cliffs, Chapter 2, Administration, Section 2-18, Borough Administrator, Section 2-18.4, General Duties. We need a motion to open. Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Regarding this ordinance, is there anyone from the public that wishes to be heard? If you do, come up to the microphone, state your name and address. Okay, seeing and hearing no one, have a motion to close.
Move.
Okay, is there anyone on council that wishes to discuss this item?
So we're splitting the duties by clerk and administrator, and we're going to hire a new person as administrator. Do we know what, do we have a salary in mind?
None of that's been...
We haven't done that yet. That'll be by a resolution.
Should we, should we think about that first, or, I mean, I would think that would, before we split it up, make sure we can have money in the budget, et cetera. And I agree with the premise of, you know, a borough administrator perhaps doing more duties or taking on more things. I'm not sure what that is exactly, to say...
This is just housekeeping to separate it.
But it's, but it's not just housekeeping because we're going to incur another, another set of health benefits, another pension and a higher salary, so it's not just housekeeping. I wish it was just housekeeping, I would...
Well, it's a fair concern, however, the person who's doing both functions right now, sitting next to me, is here till 10 o'clock at night doing both, so there's a need to separate the positions and then figure out how to go forward with the ordinance. This is the way, actually, it was intended to be. Yours back, unfortunately, through some administrative issues, it didn't get done right, so we're just cleaning it up.
I'm okay with that, Mayor, I really am. I just think, I would feel a little more comfortable if I knew what we were, your finances getting, so I don't even know what a borough administrator gets paid, I'm sure it's not...
Councilman, at that point, if you're not in agreement with whatever numbers are talked about, then that's another discussion. This is just to separate that, and it's changing the word shall to may. That's all it is, nothing more than that. Everything else is the same, but...
But we, so we will discuss all that before...
Yeah, for sure.
You want to make sure, that's all.
Yeah, so Councilman Aversa, procedurally, there'd be a resolution at that time.
And it'll be discussed.
Everybody up and...
Mr. Mayor, so are we saying that we just changed the word from shall to may, so it doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to get a full-time administrator at this point? Or was that discussed and you've already made your mind to hire a full-time administrator? I'm posing the question to you.
We, what we discussed has been here publicly, and we are changing the word shall to may, and we'll evaluate at that time.
And I think we did discuss, if I'm right, Councilwoman at the last meeting.
No, when the, when the ordinance was introduced, it was mentioned, but I'm just trying to understand the reason why we have to separate and the reason why we have to hire a full-time administrator, and the reason why we have to pay somebody...
Yeah, so those are fair questions, and we did discuss this in our December regular meeting as well. The reason is that the two roles have grown in terms of time commitments and requirements, that it's really the job of two people at this point, and our clerk administrator who's sitting next to me has done a fine job managing both, but it's overwhelming, especially when you factor in all the Oprah requests as well. I'm sorry, Councilwoman McMorro?
It's not, Councilwoman, it's not physically possible for one person, for the borough to grow the way it's growing and for us to advance, to have one person fill the job, just as we discussed from the recreation and Lizette Constance, in an effort to help her, I've left Borough Hall at 7 o'clock every night for the last few days, and tomorrow we're going to have another day like that, in an effort to help her. And anyone else is welcome to come without exceeding three that's on that committee, but, you know, there's a lot of work.
Just out of curiosity...
I may finish, because you were very quick to criticize, always, but there's, go ahead, you can look at him all you want, but, you know, I don't ever see anybody reaching out and saying, do you need help with something? I don't even see, not even to me, to Lizette, but, you know, I ask her if she needs help, she asks for my help, and I help her. That being said, okay, we need additional individuals in certain departments for this file to operate efficiently and for our residents to get what they are paying for and for what they deserve. We have a recreation department and community events that has exceeded everyone's expectations this year, and we want that to continue, and we want to offer them more. Does that mean you have to hire someone now full-time? Yes. You're investing into your town, you're investing in your residents. That's what they're living in Englewood Cliffs for, to get services. And we, I am, I could say I am, of a mindset of providing those, obviously at the most, in the most cost-efficient way, but to provide those services. When those further discussions come up, if you are in disagreement with them, you can vote no. But, you know, to say stop the process of looking into how we can better our town and give our residents more, I'm of an opinion that I don't agree with that.
I don't think I ever said to stop the process, but, excuse me, I'm speaking now.
Yeah.
So, you know, you're so rude sometimes.
Let's stay focused.
Let me, let me just stay focused here. I'm very glad that you brought the fact that you're thinking about hiring a full-time recreational director too. Where are all these monies coming from? You're going to be hiring a full-time recreation...
Yeah, we're going off topic here.
Okay, I understand. So I, you know, stopped at this point, but going back to the full-time administrator, when was the last, just out of curiosity, when was the last time that we had a administrator and a clerk, like two different, you know, persons working? Not ever, right?
I don't know, although I might recall.
Yeah, so, yeah.
No, maybe Mrs. Norton would know. I mean, no, there was Mr. Talbot, I believe, was an administrator, but I don't know if he was an administrator clerk, it was both.
Look, we're trying to...
I'm trying to move forward.
Yeah, we're looking forward, and we're trying to make this the best town in New Jersey, and to do that...
No, I appreciate that because I do want to live in the best town in New Jersey too. But I'm just thinking, aside from the Oprah requests, and, you know, in the past, I have really not heard Lizette complain, you know, about, you know, being overworked, and, you know, last time when we had this discussion, Mayor, you mentioned that she was here until 9 o'clock. Today, it's 10 o'clock. So, you know, I haven't really heard from Lizette about being overworked, so I'm just curious, like, why are we so quick to create this full-time position when we know that, you know, we don't, and we're not going to have the money?
You're saying we're not going to have the money. No one's looked at that part yet. When we get to that part, then we'll have more discussions. All we're doing now is starting the process, and you'll get to vote later. If you don't like it later, then you vote no. You want to stop the process before it begins.
And just to be clear, Councilwoman O, this is just giving the council the ability to separate the two positions.
We can still keep it the way it is if we so choose.
You may.
Okay.
That's what the may is about, that's right.
Correct. Previously, it was a requirement...
Right.
That the clerk did the administrator's duties. Now it is an option.
That was the question that I, you know, posed to you before.
Yes.
So thank you for clarifying.
You're welcome, Councilwoman.
We are of the opinion, we discussed that, I am, I can speak for myself, that that is what we are looking to do. We talked about this at last month's meeting.
But it doesn't have to be so.
Who are we?
Aye, aye.
We never had this discussion about hiring a full-time administrator, right? So when we use the word "we," who are we?
We said we'll look into it. We make recommendations, Gloria, right?
It sounds like you already made up your mind.
Gloria, you know what, maybe if you, and I don't want to say...
Let's move on.
So, anyone else on council with any comments?
Yeah, I have a comment. I have a comment, it's not referring to this, but the chief of police had said that we are committee, okay, for the police department committee, never met, okay? That's what he relayed, and we had no interaction.
Councilman?
Yes.
We are limited to discussing on this ordinance now?
No, I'm sorry then.
That's okay.
Okay.
Hold your stuff, we'll find out later. All right, anyone else on this ordinance, and this ordinance only? Okay, all right, have a motion to pass this ordinance.
Make a motion to move the...
Second.
Councilperson Aversa?
Yes.
Liang?
Yes.
O?
No.
McMorro?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Consavo?
Yes.
Okay, passes. And...
There's not, that's...
Have a motion to adjourn, please.
I guess I'm not going to get my statement here.
Councilman's special meeting is limited to what...
No, because he made a statement before, and I was thinking about it, and then he was wrong in what he said.